...with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna have to start having the dates put in bold so I can see them quicker. Item number one on the agenda is open sealed proposals, Planning Commission Administrative Hearing Officer for Land Use Appeals. Seth. One.
It is from Nick Tatten. And this is a $1,000 non-fundable retainer deposit, payable on execution of the contract, $50 per hour for research on background information, bill against the retainer. And then on a per hour basis, as necessary after that, $100 per hour to conduct meetings and hearings, bill against the retainer, and then on an hourly basis after that, actual talks will probably be done.
Excuse me, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and acknowledge that that was it, just the one then, for sure. The one bid from Nick Tatten, her proposal, and that we turn that over to Todd for review.
I'll accept and second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number two on the agenda, open sealed proposals for opioid litigation law firm. Seth, back to you.
Get this moved up here so that you can hear me. The first one is from Curtin and McConkey. I'm not sure if there is a dollar figure that we should be looking for in here.
Seth, there should be a percentage, a, we ask for a number of things in addition to the rate, a contingency fee rate at which it would be handled. So, I don't know that we need to list any, unless commissioners are interested in hearing that. We ask for a number of things, such as who, what other fir, counties or governmental entities they're representing, what their fee rate would be, whether or not they will forward expenses, litigation costs, and their general, the general history of their firm and their capacity to handle complex litigation. So, there are a number of things in here that we're looking for, and I think trying to identify all of those here tonight would be kinda tedious and, but you're certainly welcome to ask for as much information as you want, but I think asking Seth to dig through that will take a minute.
Commissioners, I think it would be appropriate to read them in unless you want more information.
Just, you say read them in, just the names?
Just read the names in and then turn it over for review.
I'm happy with that.
That works.
I didn't find the rate on this one, but it took me a minute while you were talking. So, Curtin and McConkey, the first. The next bid is from Dernham Jones and Pinniger, or proposal.
Dernham who and who?
Dernham Jones and Pinniger.
They meant business when they taped this one, but yeah. They have provided multiple copies for you. And, oh, Dernham Jones and Pinniger and Phipps Deacon Purnell P L L C. And that's probably the firm they're affiliated with in the nationwide litigation, I think. The next is from Maggoby Kataksonos and Greenwood.
Just some light reading for you, right?
What?
Just some light reading, right?
And that is just a second copy in a separate envelope for. And the last is from Jones Waldo. And it lists everyone, law firms Jones Waldo, Holbrook, and McDonnell, and Barron and Bud, and Levin and Papantonio are the combined group of attorneys for this bid.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we acknowledge the bids from those four groups and that we turn it over to the, to Christian Briner for full review of all the requirements we requested.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering if I might take a moment of personal privilege before we move into some of these other items.
I'll allow.
Yesterday, at the Governor's Energy Summit, we received word that the judge in Oakland has ruled on the Oakland Port Project in favor of development. And so, it's a very, very good day for energy throughout the United States, but particularly for coal producers. And so, that doesn't mean the work's not finished, it just simply means we've been waiting now for two years for this to happen. And so, I thought it was very interesting that it couldn't come at a better time than at the Governor's Energy Summit to be informed that those things were going on. So, we hope that that'll reignite our coal industry and jobs and economic development throughout the county. And just wanted to let the public know that that's a very, very good thing. I know there's articles already out there on it, and it'll, it'll, it'll be good. I've been saying, put your smiley face on, because coal is not dead. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's great news.
It is a win for our community.
For sure. Item number three, review and possible approval, possible adoption of ordinance 495 amendments to Section 9 of the Carbon County Development Code. Todd Thorne.
Commissioners, if I could just briefly introduce this, is, last time you approved the actual amendments themselves, you had a public hearing on them, and you approved those changes to Section 9, which is definitions. And so, this is just, to make a, to formally make an amendment to the code, we have to have an ordinance. And so, this is house cleaning, because I forgot to put it on the agenda as an ordinance. And we also had a public hearing on it last time, I believe, and received comments, and you approved it based on those comments. So, I printed up, Todd has printed off the actual changes. Lori has the original ordinance, which is to be signed along with the actual changes to that, Section 9. So, I hope I didn't steal your thunder, Todd.
I don't have any thunder to steal, so.
I don't have any questions.
Do you have anything to add, Todd? No.
Well, then, I'll make the motion to adopt ordinance 495, amendments to Section 9 of the Carbon County Development Code.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thanks for all your effort, Todd. Item number four, review and possible approval of recommendation from the Planning Commission for an amendment to North Liberty Estates, Lot 2, Dino and Angelo Kepis. Welcome.
How are you?
Good. If you can state your name, just so that we have it on record.
Angelo Kepis?
There we go.
I just wanna know, does anybody really know you by Angelo?
Yeah, well, certain people. So, do you want me to explain this?
Yeah, just give us a brief explanation.
Okay, basically, is all we're doing here is kinda tidying up our east boundary at Liberty Subdivision. We did a land swap with the east boundary owner and made the canal the boundary. So, that's basically all there is to it.
Just looks like a narrow strip that you'll add to Lot Number 9.
Right.
To clean it up, sort of.
To go all the way to the canal.
Right.
Perfect.
This was reviewed and approved by, recommended to be approved from the Planning Commission.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thanks. Item number five, review and possible approval of resolutions to fill vacancies on county weed, on county boards. Did we receive any applicants for those?
I don't have that we did.
I don't have any in the, I don't have any in the packet.
Okay. I think we're short on the weed board, because of a gentleman that moved to another area. And I'm not sure what other boards still.
Tourism's, could still take some, some other applicants.
Just sounds like we need to get out and do a little more pushing, see if we can get some, some more applicants.
Commissioner Potter, tourism, if, if we had someone from industry, then we could have two more applicants, right?
Correct.
So, Commissioners, the statute says you're supposed to eventually have a resolution that has the names of all those that are on the, that have been appointed to boards. And I drafted a resolution, I don't know if it, is it in your packets?
We don't.
It's not.
It's not.
Okay. I think the thought was that, that we, I know Rita was gonna do one final push to get some people on these, but I think we ought to have a resolution some point this year that reflects who we've appointed. We can always pass another one if we get other people on there, but maybe we could have a motion to approve a resolution next time that reflects at least who we've got on our boards through today's date.
Sounds good.
I'd go ahead and make that motion, and maybe we could bring that forward for our next meeting.
Great.
Does that need to be done in a motion here, or is that just something to expect?
Well, I, I'd like the motion to have, to, I guess, a motion that it be put on the agenda again as a formal approval of a formal resolution.
And was that your motion, Commissioner Potter?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number six, consideration and possible approval of a request to deferred delinquent property tax, Dee Hanson.
Hi, how are you today?
Good.
So, I own this property.
Can you, can you state your name for the record?
Deborah Hanson.
Thank you.
Thank you. When we first bought this property, my husband and I bought the property, we remember standing out in the backyard, my current husband at the time, standing out in the backyard and thinking, my God, what a glorious backyard. A few years later, we were contacted by phone by somebody who owned that property, not us. It was already fenced. We thought it was ours. We ended up having to buy the property. Unfortunately, it's still in her name, and I haven't had it recorded yet. Money's been a little bit short sometimes. And so, we are now being faced with having a tax sale on it where it's just literally fenced in. There's no frontage to it, there's no water to it, there's no sewage to it. It's just a piece of land there. Now, personally, it still has my garden on it. The water spigot that's on it actually goes to my meter. I'm just asking for 30 days. I understand, I guess when you guys do this, it lasts for a year. But by the end of June, I would like to have this totally paid off in three payments and have it done.
When you talk about three payments, what are you proposing?
So, on the, first payment would be the 30th of May, the second payment would be the 27th of June, oh no, sorry, excuse me, 30th of May, the 13th of June, and the 27th of June. I would have to look at the total and do my math, which I had earlier, but forgot to write down. So, it's a total of $1,093.04.
One question I have in regards to it is it looks like you did provide a quitclaim deed from
Ms. Peterson.
the current owners. And you say that has not been recorded yet.
No.
When would you be recording that?
As soon as I get the taxes paid, because I can't record it until the taxes are paid.
And, and that was my big concern, is that, you know, because it's an open deed like that, you, you may end up paying the taxes and still not have the property.
Yeah, I need to get that done. And so, I talked to everybody, and they said that I needed to get the taxes totally paid, and then I could record it. Unfortunately, going through a title company costs quite a bit of money for two pieces of property that are really not worth very much money.
Who, where is, is, did the recorder tell you, you can't record it until the taxes are paid? Who told you that?
The tax commission. Said that they didn't think that I could record it until the taxes were paid. If that's not true, I've got 15 minutes, I can go record it.
Well, I don't think that's the case. I don't think anybody's checking to see if taxes are paid in the recorder's office. I don't think that's a bar to, to changing title.
Okay, then I can probably do that within the next week. That way, it's, would be my property.
And, and that's, that's exactly where I was going with the questions, is that, you know, until that is, is recorded, you know, really, it's somebody else's property, or somebody could come in prior to it and, you know, take that right from you. So,
Yeah.
you know, my, my questions were just simply saying, you really do need to get it recorded.
Definitely.
As far as that goes. And I know it might be a mute point, you know, based on the discussion today, because of the tax sale is actually tomorrow.
Right.
And so, at that point in time, then that really does, you know, make a difference on, okay, what do you do with that property? Right now, I'm assuming, again, looking at the property, the tax notices, that it is still in the name of the person who, you know, has, who has that. And so, in reality, with a tax sale tomorrow, that's whose property is being sold is the person you bought the property from, because there's not a recorded deed there.
True.
So, it's a little bit, it's a little bit complicated in that respect, as far as, you know, whose property is it that is up for tax sale?
Yeah.
Commissioners, Ms. Hanson did come in today, and she has paid the tax on the other parcels, the other parcel, the part that has her home on it, that's been redeemed. This would be the part that makes up, like she said, the backyard, which is landlocked. She has come in, and she is, unlike some other property owners, she's actually come in and shown, you know, an effort to try to get some things taken care of. And the amount that she stated is correct, it's $1,094.04 is the total tax and penalty due on those two parcels.
Christian, do you have any input as far as what is putting forward is, in regards to recording and whose property is really being sold?
Well, I, the statute says that you can make a decision that's in the best interests of judgment, of, of justice, or in the best, in the interests of fairness. My concern, though, is that the property is not in her name. And so, she, she's really, despite the fact she does have a, appear to have a quitclaim deed, but that hasn't been recorded. I think, you know, but I'm, I've never heard that you can't go and change title, because there might be, you have some back taxes. The recorder's going to record it if it's, if the deed's been notarized, the recorder's not gonna go and check to see if taxes are paid. So, that could be done immediately. I think you could make a, if you wish to extend her additional time, you could do that, and make it contingent upon her actually having that, that deed recorded prior to the tax sale tomorrow, and, and showing proof of that to the county recorder, or county clerk, although I'm not sure how much time the county clerk's gonna have to be looking at those kinds of things. But you could do that. I think you, you could do that, make it, make your deferment contingent upon her getting that recorded, if you're inclined to do, make a deferment. The other thing to think about is this is not a primary residence, as far as I'm aware, the tax is not, even though it's five years behind, it's still less than what most people pay for a tax, for a property. The property was purchased voluntarily, it's not like it was property that was, fell into her hands and she needed to get a probate done to get it done, or she's trying to administer a trust. This was property that was voluntarily purchased. So, I guess those are my concerns, is that the amount is not extremely high, it was voluntarily purchased. I understand it does appear to be, you know, if we were to look at it, we probably couldn't tell where the boundary is of this property. It appears to be contiguous with all other portions of it. But, that being said, it was purchased, and, and we've got five years of taxes on it. So, I guess it's up to you to decide what to do. I think legally, you could, though, say that if you're inclined to make a deferment, that you could make it contingent upon her actually transferring title.
And if you took that route, we'd want to have proof of that to our office by at least 9:30 in the morning, because the tax sale starts at 10:00.
What time does the recorder's office open?
Nine.
Eight o'clock.
What time does it close?
Five.
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 Commissioners, I, I feel like, if this were to go to tax sale tomorrow, I don't know that there would be neighboring interested parties that have a greater interest, even though Deborah's name is not on the property currently. I am inclined to, with this clause or this caveat, that she, get it recorded first thing in the morning, or immediately after this meeting, and show evidence to, to the clerk auditor that it is recorded and in her name, that we allow the deferment, and give her a chance to get things paid up as she has scheduled and, and stated in the next few, few months. Obviously, the statute requires a year, though in good faith, we would expect it to be sooner. That's, that's where, how I feel at this time, and I'd be open to your thoughts and opinions.
Because it allows it for a full year, do we, do we make the condition of the sale if she isn't paid up by June, because those were the dates that you gave us?
Yes.
If we're not paid up by June 27th, do we, do we say that's your last chance, or do we, because obviously, it's gonna be a full year. Do we set a hard day, and if she doesn't pay up by that?
I don't know that you can
I don't know that we can.
cut it off that way, because.
Basically, you're allowing it, she, she would have the entire year.
Right. You either give her the year, or you don't. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
The statute doesn't allow you to increase the interest, and that's set in statute penalty.
It's, so, so it's not, it's not the June 27th, although we would appreciate that you
Have it paid.
expedite and get it paid off quick, so, so it protects your asset and, and.
Good way into a future decision.
Yes.
Correct.
So, Commissioners, that would be my motion.
I'll go ahead and second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
So, you'll have to be here first thing in the morning
First thing in the morning.
with your notarized deed, not just a copy.
Yeah.
It might be good to go down there, if they're still there.
I would.
You've got five minutes, and make sure that you have all the documentation you need for morning, so that you can make sure that happens.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Item number seven, review and possible approval of contract for catering bartending services for Warrior Days. Commissioner Miller, if I remember right, you were gonna go ahead and pull this off?
Yes, let's go, we, we've found, we've discussed in length a number of different options and found perhaps a better option of just kinda using some of the local folks that have helped us out with other events. So, I think that we'll go ahead and pull this at this time.
Okay. Moving on then, item number eight, review and possible approval of a lease agreement, renewal with Guardian Edlydam for office space in existing Seventh District Court Building. Seth, do you wanna cover this?
Yeah, I can give you the background on it. So, the, the Seventh District Court, which is being built, the footprint of the old county courthouse administrative building at 120 East Main, will house juvenile probation, the juvenile court, and the two Seventh District Court Rooms and their support staff. It will not house the Guardian Edlydam's office, which will remain in the other building. Past commission meeting, we've, we adopted the contract for the new building, the lease agreement, which will pay for the construction and maintenance of that building in its entirety. The county still owns the building, which is directly behind it, and the northwest corner of that building is going to be modified slightly to house, to give the Guardian Edlydam a bigger space to be able to serve the public. And it'll be right across from the courthouse, should work well with the court's functions. This contract is the lease agreement, which will be paid by the administrative office of the courts for the Guardian Edlydam's office and the portion of the building, the existing building that they will use. It does mention in there that there will be, not to exceed $5,000 to do some remodel work on that. We need to, to remove a door and add a door to be able to provide the proper access. They're interior doors, not exterior doors. And basically divide off so that they will have a public bathroom and a private bathroom for their staff. And, and that's pretty much all the remodel work that'll, that it will take. And so, we'll have to do that remodel work. And part of that, they're gonna pay that lump sum upfront. As they do that, the Guardian Edlydam's office will stay in the other corner of the building until we have the courts moved out, and then we'll do the remodel work that needs to happen, then they'll move into that space.
And it looks like the, the rent for the space that they will be using is $15,916.05 per year, just for the record? For the next, running through
Five years?
Yeah, running through 2023.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioners?
I have no questions.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the lease. It's contract number 87-1395, addendum number seven, in regards to the administrative office of the courts with a Guardian Edlydam contract.
I'll go ahead and second that motion.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number nine, review and possible approval of a lease agreement with Carbon County Chamber of Commerce for, Commerce for office space in the Carbon County Administration Building. Commissioners, there's been some discussion and talk about the chamber moving into this building in Suite 2100. In exchange for some of the leased space, there will be other things that the chamber will, will fulfill for that leased space, specifically mailings being the front end of the tourism office. Are there any other things that you'd like to point out in this contract, Commissioners?
I don't know that I wanna point out so much from the contract, just acknowledge the synergistic relationship that the chamber and the county, chamber being a county-wide entity, not necessarily of the county, but in many other areas, they do cohabitate a similar building or approximate building. And so, the increased services that new businesses or businesses meeting with the chamber can have in, in coming to the county for business licenses, or for information about the area, or for working with economic development people or tourism people here in our community, I think is just an added benefit. Plus, we have some of the newest space in town, and when people are, are meeting with the Um plus, we have some of the newest space in town and when people are are meeting with the chamber, we want them to have a great experience and so I I think it is opportunistic in this time of transition that they are able to consider us as as an option. As far as a, you know, a place to call home.
Is that, is that a motion?
Oh, well, I I can make a motion to approve.
We we have a motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess that was a bit long-winded. Sorry.
Item number ten, review review and possible approval of contract for Stan Tech for phase one of Carbon County's Brownfields grant. Christian.
Commissioners, that uh we're still waiting for that uh amendment to come in from Stan Tech. We've given them the changes we wanted and that has not yet come in, so I would ask that that be tabled until we get that amendment in. Or or not an amendment, but the revised version of the revised final version of the contract.
I'll make the motion to table until we have time to not only receive it, but review it before another commission meeting.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number eleven, review and possible approval of lease agreement renewal with KUSA for communication tower rack space. Barry, do you wanna speak to this?
Uh commissioners, out at Four Mile Hill, we have a communication site and towers that we co-locate with KUSA. Um they occupy our building. Um we also occupy their tower and it's come to our attention that um they've been giving us a really good deal for using their tower and um it's it's time that we need to compensate them for that. And so in rather than exchanging exchanging monies, we're going to reduce our rent that they're using in our building in exchange for the tower space that we're using on their tower. So this will be addendum to the current contract, uh thus reducing their current lease and the monies we'll collect.
And approximately how much will that lease decrease?
Two hundred dollars a month.
Commissioners, the only thing I, when I drafted this, I put that they are um leasing rack space in our tower. It's actually not a tower, it's a building, isn't it?
Correct.
So I'd like to just make that, if you're inclined to approve that, I would make the change and make that, print that out tonight before you sign it, so I'll just need to print a new version of it that would just substitute the word building for tower, if you're inclined to approve it.
Are you are you satisfied with the negotiation and the adjustment?
It it's been a great partnership and and we'd like to continue that.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve that addendum to the contract with the change that Christian's proposing specifying the building over the tower.
Yes.
Now I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Item number twelve, uh consideration and possible approval of agreement with Johansson and Tuttle for engineering services for hill subdivision and road improvements. Christian.
Commissioners, uh this is the agreement that was forwarded to us by the engineers who are completing the design on the hill subdivision uh in conjunction with the approval of the special assessment area that we approved and for which we approved the uh special assessment tax levy for that particular area. They provide a a preliminary design which kinda helped us understand what the scope of the project was going to be. Because they're professional services provider, uh we have the right to just simply continue to contract with them. And so this is the terms of the contract that would allow them to complete the design of the entire road and the engineering of the entire road and uh is what we would be relying upon going forward with respect to not just the design and engineering of the road, but the procurement of the contract of the contractor as well. They will help us provide the contractor and find the contractor and they will also inspect the contractor's work and uh supervise to some extent the uh the work of the contractor. They will also do testing um as the as the work progresses uh and preliminary to the work. So you'll see that it's a ninety four thousand dollar proposed term. I reviewed the contract. Uh there were a couple of changes that I suggested that be made and we've and they've agreed to do that. You'll see in section um four point uh
Nine.
Four point nine that there's a a blank space on which they can, we can agree by which they will cease to work for us if construction doesn't start after they've finished their design and we've agreed that we would make that be thirty days. So in other words, if construction does not commence within thirty days after they've finished their design, then they wouldn't have to um wait for us to tell them when the project's gonna start which would, because they're gonna have to assign people to come out there and be present for certain parts of the work. So if construction doesn't start within thirty days of the project, then they have to give us seven days notice to let them, to let us know they're not gonna uh be providing those inspection and onsite services. And then in section five, it uh you have the option of choosing either a single prime contract or multiple smaller contracts that break out the work and we've just put in a not applicable with respect to those provisions where it contemplates multiple smaller contracts. Um and then the draft of it also said that there was an exhibit A for additional uh engineering services. In fact, there is no such exhibit A, so they amended that addendum just to say their addendum A for that is zero pages. That's how engineers do things, I guess, so.
And that's eight point two point one.
Yes, thank you. So with those changes inserted, uh I've given Lori the official final uh copy to be signed that reflects those changes, if you're okay with that.
You know, and again, I think that it's important just for review that uh like you had indicated that the project, the hearings, everything was done in regards to this, a special assessment area. And so the funding for this is coming from that subdivision. This is not a a county. It's a county project only in that we have to administer it, but the payment in full for the project, including the design and the engineering comes from those homeowners affected by this project.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the contract with uh Johansson and Tuttle.
We have a motion?
And I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number thirteen, review and possible approval of agreement with Price City to provide prosecution services through Carbon County Attorney's Office. Jeremy.
Thank you. Commissioners, as you know, the budget cuts from last year have left us in the county attorney's office shorthanded. And uh in working with each of you, looking for ways that we can do more with less um and in working with the city, uh we've found a way that we think we can capture some economies of scale and efficiency that would benefit both the county and the city and as a result, the community as a whole. Specifically, what I'm talking about is currently Price City prosecutes crimes both in the district court and in the justice court uh through the city attorney. He will be retiring at the end of June. As a result, the city will have to fill that position and potentially incur increased expense uh because he's been doing that for a long time. The county attorney's office also prosecutes crimes in the district court and in the justice court, although those would be county crimes and then also felony matters that no matter where they occur within the county, whether that be city or county. Um and so in uh in discussing then this with with you and and with the city and with the city attorney, uh I think there is an opportunity here for us to be able to funnel all of those cases through the county attorney's office. Uh we've, the county's made a significant investment in our computer system to be able to efficiently handle the cases. Uh we are in those courts already anyway. Um the defendants who appear in those courts sometimes are confused about which entity is handling their particular case, so I think it'll be a little more straightforward for the defendants. Um and so overall, I think it would be a good scenario. This particular agreement calls for a payment of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year from Price City. Uh that would carry an increase of one point five percent per year. It's a three-year agreement, but we've structured it so that it would have a hundred and twenty day cancellation provision by either party if it was not working for whatever reason. So it provides flexibility if this is not a good fit for the county uh and for the city, if it's not a good fit for them. Based on what we think are pretty accurate educated guesses on what we could do with this, we think that we'll be able to bring on um a full-time attorney and a full-time support staff. We feel like that will be able to provide a benefit to handle these city cases as well as the overload in our office uh since we lost a couple of people uh as a result of the budget cuts. And this will increase uh uh what the county will have to contribute to this. Um but still be a significant cost savings over what you were spending uh in two thousand seventeen prior to those budget cuts. And uh I've mentioned this before to the commission, but after the budget cuts, since I started in oh six, our caseload is not quite doubled on felony prosecutions. And over that same period of time, after the budget cuts, our budget has increased point zero one percent. So there's quite a disparity there. I think this will help us uh to be able to handle some of that overload uh and also be a benefit to the community as a whole because we'll be doing more with less uh in from both the city's perspective and the county's perspective. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have about this agreement or address any concerns that you have.
One of the things uh just
Excuse me.
That I believe that you just indicated was that this is just for the uh public defender's contract portion of it. Is that correct?
Uh this would only be for the prosecution.
Or that's what I mean, the prosecution side of it.
So under the agreement, the revenues that are generated as a result of fines and fees, those would still go to the city and they would provide their own public defender services. Uh so all we would be doing is the prosecution portion of it. And we would not be handling any civil matters, not be handling uh anything with respect to the public defense services.
May maybe a point out again, if you would, some of the synergies of combining what we at the county have with our software and what Price City has and uh you know, in my mind, this makes a little bit more sense, having it centralized and with our software.
Sure. So for example, right now, if a crime is committed within, let's say two crimes are committed within Price City. One is a class A misdemeanor and one is a felony. The class A misdemeanor would be routed to Mr. Sampedino's office. It would be processed through his office, which is still operating on a paper-based system. Um and then they're scanning and e-filing that with the court and then when they get information back, they print it and put it in the file. Um at some point, they would probably need to transition to a paperless system. On the felony case, when it got filed, they would submit it electronically through our web-based system and it comes directly into our system and creates the file essentially automatically. There's some cleanup that has to be done by our staff, but roughly speaking, it creates the file and then we process the case from there. When those two cases went to court, we would both be appearing in district court. There would be a prosecutor for Price City, a prosecutor for the county, sitting next to each other. They would handle that case uh one right after the other. Under this agreement, both of those cases would be submitted through the electronic system, come into our office. The same prosecutor would likely screen both of them. Uh and then when we go to court, there would be one prosecutor that was handling both cases, one on behalf of the city, one on behalf of the the state and uh in a scenario like that, many times the defendant is the same and so it's the defense counsel would be working with one attorney to make an agreement that's probably more efficient globally uh knowing what's happening on the other case, rather than having to try to deal with two prosecutors to figure that out. Um so I think it would benefit both the defendant as well as the public.
Okay.
So uh again, I'll happy to answer any questions. Uh the important part is from from our office standpoint, this will only work if it's fully funded by both parties, um because we cannot take on more work without adequate people. Uh and so so it would have to have to work that way.
Well, commissioners, I'm I'm in favor of this proposal. I do understand the uh funding requirements um on our part and uh the the formula that we have with Price City and what they've agreed to. I I also recognize over the past couple decades, uh the uh the lack of budget increase with relative to the workload increase that you guys have had. And so i- i- in a way, it is it is time that we catch up a little bit. And so my motion would be to approve, but I definitely open for more more dialogue.
We have a motion.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Any further discussion? With a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Appreciate it.
So uh the city will still have to approve a contract?
Yes, it's my understanding it'll be on their twenty-third agenda for approval. Um I'd like to have this effective at the earliest June first, at the latest June thirtieth. Mr. Sampedino's will be done on June thirtieth, so we've gotta have it implemented before then.
Okay. Nothing like a timeline. Thank you. Item number fourteen, presentation of past travel expenses uh for Commissioner Jake Miller.
Commissioners, this uh short little presentation um is just to I I think there's some some information out there that is misleading or lacking in regards to us as a commission as a whole. A lot of times, there come scenarios where we need to put our own paycheck back into what we do for the county and I don't think that a lot of times that goes recognized. In fact, I know that it doesn't. And uh this presentation, I'm only speaking uh about myself and my own assignments and responsibilities. Just talking a little bit of my out-of-town travel and what I do for the county. I uh I thought about putting together websites and a lot of paper information, but felt that at the end of the day, a a couple of video clips um from members of these committees that I sit on, just explaining what they are and what 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 we do and why that benefits Carbon County. And so uh I'm not speaking in any of these video clips. It is a series of different video clips put together. Um I I know that each of you could do something very similar, um since I was uh highlighted, so to speak, just with my travel expenses, having hit my travel budget for the year already. I don't have an ask um during our budget amendments in July. I will not be asking for more money or more funding for more travel. Um I'll just acknowledge that through my county paycheck, I'll be putting that back into what I do for the community and my continued participation on all of these boards. Um and just as an informational FYI to the county and to the community of what boards I serve on and and why they're important. Um again, this is just a a series of video clips put together. I don't know that we'll go through all of it. Um but there are oh eight or nine of them specifically that I'd like to hit. And so if you bear with me, um thank you, Seth, for hitting the lights. And we'll just pull out the popcorn and and watch a few videos. And in the audience, let me know if the audio is.
My name is Ben Hart. I am the deputy director at the governor's office of economic development. And it's been our pleasure to work with Carbon County leaders for the past several years, trying to help them develop economic growth that's meaningful for the citizens of their county. Um we've been very fortunate to have Commissioner Miller uh involved in a lot of uh what we're involved with in our office, which are things like workforce initiatives, uh rural economic development initiatives, legislative initiatives. Um we feel like if we don't have that rural voice, then we can't accurately represent our rural partners. And so we're grateful for the commissioners that are willing to come and be a part of what we do at the governor's office of economic development. Really, it helps us to better represent uh all the different areas throughout the state. And so when somebody's willing to set aside some of their time to come and make what we do better, um it it we're very appreciative of that, but it makes all of us better in the state of Utah. And so uh there's a few different board boards that we have, uh the good commissioner involved with, the Talent Red Utah Board. Um he also works with us at the Economic Development Corporation of Utah and other boards um that are critical for helping to uh for initiatives like lining uh education and workforce uh to. are critical for helping to, for initiatives like aligning education and workforce together and also things like developing economic growth, creating jobs and other meaningful economically related initiatives.
I'm Sean Mill, Tooele County Commissioner. I've had the opportunity and pleasure to serve with a lot of peers throughout this great state, not least of which would be Carbon County. For those that don't know, I came into office in Tooele County about six years ago and we were facing a pretty bad budget situation and we had to make some tough calls. They weren't easy. They were much more challenging than I had expected. And oftentimes, it can feel a little bit lonely to be in those positions, but one thing that I'm grateful for is my experience to be able to teach others how to avoid some of the complications that we had during our budget situation. And Jake, Commissioner Miller, reached out fairly quickly when he got into office and noticing trends within Carbon County as well. And I was, I was grateful for the opportunity to learn from some of the challenges and opportunities we had had in our situation just a few years before he'd come into office in Carbon County to say, you know, here are some of the things that we've done, here's some of the things I'd go back and do again, even though they were incredibly challenging. And here are some ways that maybe I'd tweak that message or I'd tweak the, the outcome. Maybe some of the sacrifices weren't as, as good in the end as have, had been hoped for. What was great about that is the vehicle for that opportunity was UAC, Utah Association of Counties. And I'll admit that I'm a board member of UAC in the last few years, but it is, it's invaluable to be able to work with your peers. And the first year, because of our budget situation, we cut way back on our travel expenditures and those kind of budget allotments. I didn't have the resources, I feel, back when I needed them so badly because of the situation. What was fortunate for Commissioner Miller and Carbon County maybe particularly is because he was involved, because he was engaged and wasn't just, I don't know, aloof and in an office all the time, he had established these networks, these connections that are so invaluable because only from those kind of personal connections can you build up the trust and the rapport with someone to sit down and have a candid conversation, to ask, okay, I've heard through the grapevine or I've heard stories or remember them from the news that you guys had this, we've got this as well now, so with your that and this, what, what can you teach us? So I commend him for having a type A strong personality to come out and to be engaged. And it's like that with a lot of conferences and a lot of boards and committees that we're involved with, whether it's UAC specifically in Utah, whether it's National Association of Counties, Department of Workforce Services, board and committee assignments that, that vary widely. Commissioner Miller is engaged. And I have a great and dear friend of mine who has long said, "The world belongs to those who show up." And if you don't show up, it's just true if you're a citizen that doesn't engage with your local government or if you're a commissioner in local government that doesn't show up and, and converse and network with your peers, you're not representing your constituency voice on regional matters. So for that reason, I've got to commend Commissioner Miller and I can, I'm grateful for the citizens that, even though I don't represent Carbon County, I want what's best for all of our counties throughout this great state. And Commissioner Miller is definitely one of those leaders. I commend him for being engaged, for showing up and for wanting what's best for his citizens.
Hello, everybody in Carbon County. My name's Victor Iverson. I'm a county commissioner here in Washington County. And prior to being a county commissioner, I had the opportunity to work for Senator Mike Lee. And one of the funnest things I ever did was working with the, with the good people and the county commissioners from, from Carbon County. I've always had a really good appreciation for your county. I really appreciate this opportunity to speak on behalf of my good friend Jake and, and his hard work as a county commissioner for Carbon County and the committees that we have served on. I also serve in, in what's called Utah Association of Counties, which is an important organization that advocates for county issues and advocates for the citizens of our counties throughout the state. Jake has been a tremendous asset in that, in that setting and advocating for Carbon County. He's also been involved, very importantly, in what is known as IGP or intergenerational poverty. Carbon County is, you may be aware, struggles under some of these issues with some of our families that are in economic crisis. Jake has done a great job in advocating for, for how to, to help the lives of our citizens that are struggling there. He's also participated very much with, with what's known as the National Association of Counties, which advocates for county issues on a national level. I believe that he's one of the greatest champions that Carbon County has and he's a great leader and, and he's your friend and your neighbor and I very much appreciated my association in working with him.
I'm James Ebert. I'm a commissioner of Weber County and I serve as the Secretary of Utah Association of Counties, but also as the Chair on the Welfare Reform Advisory Committee for Intergenerational Poverty at a county level. We advise the state and I spent a lot of time working with Jake as he's representing Carbon County. And many times people don't realize the amount of work that goes on at a state level. A lot of the things that happen and affect residents of Carbon County actually hap- happen at a state level. And having Jake out there representing Carbon County, addressing those issues, the return on it, sometimes you don't see at a groups, at a ground level, but they return over time. The amount of work that he does at a state level, addressing legislative questions, concerns, asks and representing Carbon County, the residents, I think that you will see over time.
My name's Kimberly Carlisle. I'm the Director of Talent Initiatives in the Governor's Office of Economic Development. And when we're looking at Talent Ready Utah and how to implement industry and education alignment, it's really important that we also work with, with rural Utah. And so it's been a pleasure being able to coordinate with Jake Miller through his involvement with DWS as well as in Price, Utah, to make sure that we are hearing voices and know what we need to do to implement this.
Hi, I'm Sarah Jones. I'm one of the co-founders of Women Tech Council and I love coming to the Talent Ready Utah core meetings because I get to really see what is happening across the state with agencies and with people like Jake, who reminds us always that the state of Utah's really large and it's really important to engage all aspects of the state when we're talking about workforce and how do we access all the talent. At Women Tech Council, we do a she-tech program. It's a high school girls' tech program and we're able to offer that to all of the girls within the state of Utah. So what we're finding is that our Silicon Slopes tech region is expanding through all areas, thanks to efforts like Jake, to make sure that we're considering the needs of rural and how we can make sure to grow those economies as well and keep everyone connected across the state.
I'm Joel Smith with Accelerant. Jake has been very, very helpful in a number of different meetings that have occurred upon the West End front, primarily the Governor's Career Pathways Board, which is now also going to be adding to the Utah Friendship Program that has spawned off of that board has been a direct result of Jake's participation. There's been a number of meetings that we've had with potential investors as well as potential participants coming to Price that I've asked Jake, when he's been in town...
... tapped talent might be in Carbon County. So we reached out to Commissioner Jake Miller and he was immediately very accessible, very helpful and knowledgeable of those things that we could try to leverage to bring some economic development to Carbon County. I had the opportunity to work with him this last legislative session on the Hill and witnessed that he was very involved in meeting with leadership, serving on committees and boards and trying to make an impact and bring some great things in legislation to the county where he resides, but also other rural counties within the state. We worked on some legislation with Senator Okerlund and have some great things moving forward to this next session next year. So I look forward to working with him. He's a great advocate for Carbon County.
Hi, I'm Jared Haynes. I'm Associate Commissioner with the Utah System for Technical Colleges. And it, it's a great pleasure for me to serve on a...
Did you have a question?
I did. With the agenda, we're talking about past travel expenses. And while I see this as endorsement for you and for Carbon County, I don't know that it pertains to the item that's on the agenda. There's no, there's no question that you're involved in boards as we are and in your introduction, yes, we could do that, but if the item is a presentation of past travel expenses, these are endorsements.
For sure. So endorsements of my expenses in the sense that every time that I travel to Salt Lake, if I submit those for travel expenses, that's around two-hundred-and-twenty-something dollars. And yes, I've expended that for the year, which means that every time that I continue to do that, that just comes out of my own pocket or my county paycheck, which is fine. And I just want that to be a representation for everyone here to acknowledge and to understand that all of us, all three of us, I'm sure, put our own money back into what we do. And, you know, this particular next individual, he's a Commissioner of Education. And sometimes to help out with some of what we lack here locally, needs to be done at a state level. We can complain here locally, but to get something to change, sometimes you have to go to the state. And so these are relevant to my, my specific expenses that I incur and will continue to incur personally as we go forward. I didn't mean to go through all of them. I did skip through one that was kind of noisy, you couldn't really hear what he was saying very well, but I would like to watch at least two more if, if you would bear with me.
I, I, I will go for at least this one that you're on, that you're finishing and then I'd like to move on.
A number of committees and task forces throughout the state and one in particular I've been involved with recently is on the State Workforce Development Board, there is a committee for career pathways. And very important as we're working with technical education, provide certificates and pathways into education, this has been a great opportunity to identify ways that we can collaborate with industry, share best practices across the state and really plug into what business and industry need for technical education. So I've appreciated working on that committee with Jake Miller as the Chair. He's really pulled us in and engaged us with things across the state. Triggered some good collaboration with the Utah State University Eastern Region, who provides the technical college function in that part of the state. And so it, it's been nice to be able to share some best practices between us and them as well.
Hi, I'm Gary Harder. I run the Department of Veterans and Military.
Someone once mentioned that the best things that happen for a county actually happen outside of its borders and endorsements or whatever you want to call these, that's what they attest to, that's what they testify to, is the fact that as, as a county commissioner, from day one, before I even ran the first time, I told people I would not be a behind-the-desk commissioner, that I'd be out there in the community, I'd be out there beyond our community borders, bringing to our home those best practices out in the state and outside of our state. And I believe I've been doing that. This Commissioner of Education was talking specifically about some new internships that Intermountain Electronics just interviewed for two days ago and some other very exciting things that are happening because of our particip- our participation on committees outside of our area. And that is a direct correlation to my, my travel expenses that I incur, both on behalf of the county and personally for the county. And I guess to cut this meet, meeting shorter, since this is the last item on the agenda, we don't have anything further, I will go ahead and allow that to be over.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
We are adjourned. Thank you.